Call this meeting of the Johnson City City Commission to order. It's Thursday, August 4th, and we're meeting in the commission chambers at the Municipal and Safety Building. Tonight, we have T.R. Dunn here to do our invocation, and if you'll please remain standing after that for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're so grateful to you today, just allowing us to see another day we've never seen before. You told us to rejoice and be glad in this day, and for that, we're grateful. God, as we come, as we pray over these city commissioners and our city manager, Lord, I pray, God, right now, that you would have ordered their steps tonight. God, just guide them, Lord, as they lead our city, this great city that we live in. Lord, I pray that you would protect them, Lord. I pray that you would, um, just, just let your blood cover them, Lord. And God, touch our city, Lord, that's in, uh, that's in need of you. Lord, help us to realize that we need you. We cannot do anything without you, Lord. And I just pray, God, they are just, they are men and they are women, they are human, but God, ultimately, Lord, they serve you, and for that, we're so grateful. And God, I pray for this meeting tonight, that it be done in decent and order, and everything will be done to glorify your name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ball, you have an announcement?
I do. Thank you all very much. I would appreciate it, like, before the meeting, if I could take a moment to introduce Alicia Summers. You all know Alicia from Netrep. We are happy to say now that she is a part of the Johnson City staff as the Economic Development Director, and we would love to welcome you, Alicia, and I look forward to working with you more closely, and I know that this will be great for our community as well.
Yeah, I would echo that, and it's, we know your work, and we know what you've done in this community and for this community, and the growth that we've seen over, how long have, were you?
Eight and a half years.
Eight and a half years on the commercial side, so really being able to pay attention at the city side. We are poised for a lot of growth here in Johnson City, but to have somebody have their eye on it all the time, and really be able to, to network the resources that are needed, and to be able to do the groundwork that we need done right now is just, I'm, I'm really pumped about it. Let's just put it that way.
Well, I am absolutely thrilled to be here, and I have to say that all the staff that I've come across this week has been so welcoming and so helpful, and I'm honestly really excited about building this program from the ground up. I know Kathy has given me, is the stack that grows every time I talk to her and every time I see her, but I'm really thrilled to be here.
Happy to have you.
Thank you. And just for the purpose, so that folks know, we, the city has a large portfolio of economic development, so we have retail, commercial, as well as industrial and manufacturing. So, we are trying to look at this holistically and be able to look at how we can be diverse in our portfolio of economic development and benefit the whole community. And we also want to partner with, with the county, as well as the region, to make sure everybody's successful. So, thank you, Alicia.
Thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Very good. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Ball?
Yes, the next item for consideration, commission, is the consideration of approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting held Thursday, July 21st.
Make a motion to approve? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All right, if you'll call the roll.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Abstain, that was not here, so.
Commission, your next order of business is consideration of the consent agenda.
All right, I will start with Commissioner Hunter. Anything to pull there?
Uh, not tonight.
Not tonight, very good. Commissioner Brock?
I would like to pull 4.1.1, and, um, I think 4.1.2.
All right, and Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, sir. In addition to the two that have already been pulled, I would like to, um, pull 4.4.1.
I'm sorry.
What was that?
4.4.1, the Fleener Security, yeah. And I will pull 4.5.1, just to discuss the Staff Pro.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start with 4.1.1.
And I'm happy to start with that one, and then we may need some additional help from Jeremy, or Brian, I'm sorry. The first item is beginning the process for looking for an architect and working with an architect for the fire training building that was approved as part of the ARPA funding. So, that's providing a tower, as well as the facility, for the firefighters to use, and it was approved as part of the budget for last year.
And I do have a specific question within it, but if you want to go ahead and give an overview, that's fine, too.
Sure. Well, this would be the property directly behind Fire Station Number 7 on Walnut Street, and the fire department is currently using that site for a little bit of training, and this is to, just to give them a couple of buildings for classrooms and offices, more props, storage for equipment for training purposes, and on all the site development, parking, and fencing, and things that come along with that.
Okay, my, my direct question is under financial impact, and it says it will be, um, the, the architect agreement is for 6% of the construction cost, I understand that, but then it says, "And will be converted to a fixed fee at," and my, my thing's going wild right here, so.
Schematic design.
At schematic design, I don't know what's happening. So, what does it mean, "will be converted to a fixed fee"?
So, at some point during that process, we'll, when we're more confident in what the construction budget will be, then we will ask the, the architect then to lock in a fixed fee for his services for the remainder of the project.
Okay. And right now, we have already, through ARPA funds, have budgeted, as you were saying, city manager, at about $3 million?
$3 million, that's correct.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next item, we have Phil Pinzella here, but I'll just do an overview. This was a piece of property that we became aware of that is downstream from Innovation Park, and the reason that we were looking at this property is it would serve well to be a detention, retention facility for stormwater runoff from that area, so that we could maximize the build-out area on those pieces of property. It, it would be purchased with stormwater funds and would remain for the purpose of holding stormwater and reducing flooding.
And this is in that area where we have already done some work, is that correct, Mr. Pinzella, that, I mean, y'all have done a lot to clean that area up and kind of get better stormwater flow through there anyway, haven't you?
Right, here's a map of the property that we're acquiring, what's in.
You may need to lean in a little bit, Phil, I don't know if we can hear you.
Well, you did that. This is the Parker property that we're interested in. This is McKinley Road, Walnut Street. We already own this property, and there is a pump station in the corner, and so, we would essentially take the entire area, and that's where the creek is. The reason for that is whenever an opportunity arises to provide for stormwater detention, to protect downtown, et cetera, we try to take that, and this opportunity arose. The, also, when we're talking about Innovation Park, the discharge of water from the park and the hospital and everything actually flows into this area. And thirdly, if we ever got to the point, long-term, that we wanted to do stream bank credits, then we valued that, if this was what we were able to achieve, we would value that at over $300,000, so we can actually kind of get our money back. That's what we wanted to do, but it's primarily for stream bank protection, I mean, for flood mitigation.
What, what improvements will you make on the property to address detention, or what's it gonna look like after we take possession and?
Well, right now, there's, we've had to clear a couple of times for homeless population has just overwhelmed it, so we'll thin it out, clear it out, and then slowly excavate this land up in here in order to provide for the detention, and we'll use the dirt for projects that we have ongoing in the near future and longer term. Also, um, some properties, when a property develops, if they want to develop in the flood plain, it used to be that they could fill up to the floodway. Well, it caused a problem because we were elevating the creek by about a foot, so if you have an area like downtown that isn't gonna adjust, that's intolerable. So, what we say is that you have to mitigate if you, if you want to fill on flood plain property. One area to do that would be to, if you wanted to do that somewhere in this basin, that this is an option that they could have in order to mitigate their development, so that they're actually dealing with development at the same time you're dealing with flood control. So, we try to get a better product at the end of the day, on both the development side and for the benefit of downtown.
Is there any potential recreational use that would be compatible to what we're gonna be doing?
Well, you know, the original, the original purchase, some 35 years ago, almost 40 years ago, was actually to create a park when we redid this entire neighborhood, and to have a park system that would service this residential area. That took a while, and it didn't mature enough. It is possible to have a, to have a dual use of the property. That is very possible.
Thank you.
In fact, I'd like to see that.
The other thing we would point out, if you will, Mr. Pinzella, the, we had an appraisal completed for this property, and it appraised at, what was the value, 200 and?
223, and so, this is about $9,000 below the, the appraised value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item that's been requested is the Fleener Security Systems Door Access Control for the Fire Department. Again, as part of the money that was set aside for the ARPA funding, the, the federal funding, we had set aside improvements to fire stations, and these improvements include, you can come on up, Brian, I'm sure I'll need your help, these include adding a key fob entry, as opposed to other access controls, so that we can standardize the way we access our buildings, and I'm sure you have a lot more technical information.
Well, that's about it. The, the electronic access offers a lot more security and flexibility in the users, and being able to know who's coming and going, and who has access to different buildings without a number of keys floating around, and those being lost or misplaced, and that type of thing. And it is important to, we're using Fleener Security on a lot of these buildings, to have consistency in their equipment and programming significantly reduces the number of glitches and things like that, that, that come along with those types of systems.
Are we looking at perhaps doing all of our buildings like that, so it's compatible?
Uh, we're, we're implementing it in, in other buildings, and this covers, I think we have it at one, Fire Station 1, and this covers all the other buildings, uh, fire stations, but we're, yeah, we are rolling this out on other buildings as well.
Is this the same that, what we have here?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Those were my questions, but I do have a new one. So, does this new system harmonize with what's here in City Hall? Like, are they integrated?
Well, it's all programmable. I, I don't know if there's one central location where all that, but it is programmable. Fleener is our security company, so they can, yeah, that can all be integrated together or independently from each other, but it's, so, for instance, you know, my selfish facilities, I would be able to program me to, to have access to certain buildings or, or others.
Yep, I was just gonna add to that. If you remember, last year, we paid about $54,000 to upgrade our premises access control system here at City Hall. This is where the main hub's at, and so, when we did that, that allowed us to add unlimited amount of doors to this system. Before, all the ports were full, so we couldn't add more facilities or more doors.
Okay.
So, now that we've done that, we can add as many doors as we want, and so, adding this will come back to our premises system that we upgraded about a year ago. Also, Water Sewer Service Complex has got multiple doors down there in their new facility that will be on this same system, the premises software system as well. So, it is being more consistent. It, that upgrade was money well spent, so that we can move this along to Gates, the gate at Fleet Management's on this same system, Keystone's on this same system, Transit's on the same system, so there's a lot of places that it's like that. Very good.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. The next item, does that answer your question, Commissioner Murphy? The next item is RFP for Staff Pro Temporary Labor Services Contract. The city currently has a contract with Staff Pro to provide temporary labor. The one really good thing about, or we have a lot of good things, but the Oracle system is, once we meet that capacity, it really triggers us to say, "You've gotta go back and increase this if you want to go above it." We, while we have dealt with a lot of the pay issues within the CDL drivers, as well as city employees to some extent, we have not addressed the temp pay, and so, it has been a challenge to get temporary employees in public works, as well as other areas. This contract allows us the ability to work with the contractor that we currently have, Staff Pro, to increase our temporary services, and those are in several areas of public works, I think, Mr. Best.
Correct, yes. Uh, we have, we use them for leaf collection, recycling, litter, and then we also have been kind of temp to hire in our landscaping and concrete group.
So, we're not really paying anything, I think, that's why I called, was, wanted to bring this up, we're not paying anything extra than normal, we're just paying for other people to do it, because we can't find people to do it through the city, so we're using Staff Pro to do the jobs that, if we could find people to do it, we would have them, but we're paying Staff Pro to do those jobs right now.
Correct. They have a 38%, so we, we pay $11 an hour, plus 38%, which is 15, 14, I believe, is the, somewhere in there, number. Don't quote me on the 38%, but it's somewhere in there, I, I looked at the invoices, but it's around $15 an hour, that's what we pay Staff Pro for the employee. And again, we, we, this is all budgeted, we do have it, I looked up all the budgets there, it is budgeted. Uh, it's a little bit more, so we will be going back out to bid, hopefully, here in the next month or so, I talked to Debbie about it, because it is more than the original contract amount, so we want to make sure that we're getting the best deal, and so, we'll be rebidding this in the fall, or in next month or so.
Is this mainly part-time staff or seasonal staff?
Yes.
Now, is, is, does this apply to Parks and Recreation, or is this just public works?
Well, I spoke with Randy, and he may have, he brought you up to date, that, that whenever I had talked to Parks and Rec, that we were utilizing that to kind of fill our gaps for temps that we can hire through the city. Parks and Rec did say they were interested, so when we rebid this here, and again, I want to get it out on the street at the end of August, is what I'm shooting for, this $100,000 really gets us just to October, whenever we start hiring leaf rakers, so that's where it gets us to. We spend a, more than, more than $100,000, or more than $195,000 on temporarys, so. So, yes, we did mention Parks and Rec, that we might be able to include.
I was just curious at the starting pay, though, if it's, if it's fundamentally different from Parks and Rec, it might be confusing.
No, $11 an hour is what we pay them through Staff Pro, and then we try to bring them over.
I don't know what Parks and Rec is.
Yeah, and we try to bring them over to the city where we can, in our temporary positions, if we find a good temp, if they last that long. Sometimes they don't last that long, so.
It's a good deal to fill in right now, that's what we're using, so.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best.
All right, Ms. Ball?
This is, next is, I guess, a recommendation of approval of the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Or would you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commission, your next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4820-22, second reading. This is the fiscal, fiscal year 2021-22 supplemental budget ordinance.
Anything changed from before?
No, no changes since the first reading.
And I, I think, just for the public benefit, the reason we do this supplemental budgets, Janet, maybe you could give a quick review.
This includes the annual budget amendment for the schools, where they've received additional grant monies. Sometimes the city receives additional grant monies, so this is kind of a housekeeping thing we do each year to recognize the fact that we receive additional revenues throughout the year, and that we appropriate the spending of those monies in the official budget.
Do I have a motion? I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4813-22. This is the third reading. It's an ordinance to consider raising the sealed bid limit to $50,000. Uh, Ms. Dillon is here. You have heard this on first reading and second reading, and this reflects changes in the state law that allow us to go up to that limit, which I think Ms. Dillon would agree helps us with efficiencies, and especially in supply chain issues, being able to get materials and supplies quicker.
I move to approve, on third reading.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jennings, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commission, your next order of business is Ordinance 4814-22. This is the third reading and public hearing. It's considering assignment of B2 zoning district to an approximately 4.8 acre territory located along 4,500 block of the Bristol Highway proposed for annexation.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commission. Just as a reminder, this is the final night for this annexation, so any action that you take tonight on the zoning assignment will go into an effect, and same on the annexation. Um, if you approve the final resolution after tonight, this will be incorporated into the city limits. Just as a reminder, um, this is a 4.7, about 4.8 acre territory located along the Bristol Highway. The applicant is seeking a zoning assignment of B4. It is currently split zoned in the county. I know that we've had conversations about this. Again, this is the third time that you guys have heard this. The future land use map does have a split zoning, however, staff is in favor of the B4 zoning. They would be required to do a buffer. It is actually currently in place, they have already planted the trees, so the buffer is already out there, and even if it hadn't been, it would be required by the zoning Staff is recommending approval, and Planning Commission recommended approval, and as a reminder, this is public hearing tonight.
Any discussion? I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to discuss this, welcome to come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Have a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All right, Ms. Jennings, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commission, your next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4815-22. This is the third reading and public hearing to consider assignment of the B4 and RP3 zoning districts to an approximately 30 acre territory located at the loop of Boat Dock Road proposed for annexation. Peyton, thank you. Commissioners, the applicant has actually requested the deferral of this annexation and its public hearing, and their requested date is November 3rd, so staff would, would recommend that, that this annexation and its public hearing get deferred to November 3rd.
All right, so we have a request for deferral. Do I need to get a motion, or can we just defer it?
Ms. Jennings, is there a motion that's required for this?
Um, I think I would, for the record, put a deferral in place.
I'll move that we defer this till November the 3rd, request of the applicant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commission, your next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4816-22. This is the third reading and public hearing to consider assigning the A1 zoning district to an approximately 10.2 acre territory located at the termination of Bridgetop Drive proposed for annexation. Good evening, Peyton, Commission. Again, this is the final night for this annexation as well, so anything that you choose to take action on tonight would be in effect. As a reminder, this is a 10.2 acre piece of property located at the termination of Bridgetop Drive in Garland Farms. The applicant is requesting a zoning assignment of A1 with plans to build a single-family home. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission recommended approval as well. And tonight is public hearing.
All right, any discussion here? All right, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4817-22, third reading, not a public hearing. This is an ordinance to rezone approximately 15.11 acres from A1 District to R4 District to build 108 rental townhomes. There is no new information since the public hearing, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, seeing no questions, anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we approve?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
We have a public hearing, don't worry.
No.
So, what'd you say? Okay, I'm sorry.
This is, this is a resounding, so we're at final action.
Sorry, uh, yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you, Commission. The next order of business is consideration of Ordinance 4818-22. This is the third reading. It's an ordinance to rezone approximately 20 acres located at 2162 South Run Street from B4 District to RP5 District. Peyton, good evening, Commission. This is also third reading, no public hearing, final action, and there have been no new updates.
We have a public hearing last, at the last on Saturday.
Correct, correct, yes, public hearing already happened.
Any further discussion or motions?
Some moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Um, yeah, before we do, I know, um, city manager and I went down and visited at Ashley Academy this past week and, and talked, um, and understood some of the issues down in that area from our, from businesses that had communicated through Ashley Academy, so, you know, looking at some of the things that got brought out last time, that I think are gonna be important in that area as development occurs, and some things that we can do to, I call it curb appeal, to make it more appealing down in that area, and I think, you know, certainly, we need to prep that area for growth, for sure.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you, Peyton. Next order of business, Commission, is the ordinance number 4819-22. This is the third reading. It's a zoning text amendment of Article 6, uh, which is use requirements by district to allow commercial accessory structures to encroach in the front and side setbacks in the gateway overlay. And Whitney, if you would, maybe just review this again, as it is a text amendment?
Yes, I certainly can.
And talk a little bit about what area we're, we're looking at.
Okay, um, so where we're looking at is in the gateway corridor, which is really along West Market Street, and what this text amendment would allow is for non-residential lots, so this is essentially commercial, um, that you have different public access points, so maybe you have a public street, maybe you have a private drive, but cars can move around your building, so it's hard to have frontage, and to allow some flexibility for certain types of accessory structures, such as. And to allow some flexibility for certain types of accessory structures, such as canopies, dumpsters, so long as they, dumpster enclosures, so long as, if they are going to encroach into a setback, we've given some parameters to that. We felt percentages were better than necessarily, like, a certain, like, a number, only because there are different setbacks for each types of street, or each type of side. So that's essentially what this is for.
Any questions?
I move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioners, we have moved now to other business. Item seven-point-one, which is final resolution and public hearing, which is the consideration of approval of the final resolution, calling for the public hearing on the proposed voluntary annexation and plan of services of an approximately ten-point-two acre territory located at the termination of Bridgetop Drive.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is the final resolution annexation request associated with that zoning assignment that you just approved a moment ago. Again, this is this ten-point-two acre territory located at the end of Garland Farms.
And it is public hearing?
And it is public hearing, yes, sir.
All right. Any questions before I go to public hearing? All right, I will open the public hearing. Any discussion on the Garland Farms property? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item seven-point-two under other business, Commissioners, is the consideration of a final resolution and public hearing. It's to consider approval of the final resolution, calling for the public hearing on the proposed voluntary annexation and plan of services of an approximately four-point acre territory located along the forty-five-hundred block of the Bristol Highway.
Thanks, Peyton. Good evening again, Commissioners. Just as a reminder, yeah, just as a reminder, this is that four-point-eight acre territory located along the Bristol Highway that you guys just approved a zoning assignment of B four.
Again, it's public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So I will open the public hearing? Anyone wishing to discuss the Bristol Highway addition? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Move approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our formal meeting, unless Commissioners have comments. I would just say again, well, I would just add that I appreciate being here. It has been a wonderful opportunity. I think I'm marking the, over seven months, and I would just again say how incredible the staff have been. I would echo what Alicia Summers said about how welcoming the staff are, and they continue to be in being here, as well as the community. So I thank you for the opportunity to serve this community.
I will open. Anyone else? Commissioner Murphy, you have anything?
Well, just in response to City Manager Ball, I believe we're all pleased to have you here. You work hard and you work tirelessly, and we noticed that. You're very responsive, you're attentive, you care about people in the community. A lot of positive comments are going around the city about you. So keep up the good work. We support you, we love you, and we're glad you're here. I will also make mention that this weekend, Good Samaritan Ministries will be hosting its annual back-to-school picnic and party this Saturday, August sixth, at eleven a.m. So it's for the entire Appalachian Islands region, so we're calling all families and friends to come out and have fun on bounce houses. We'll have a foam party, petting zoo, food and games, entertainment, music, come out, food trucks, you will not regret it. There's also another event happening in the community.
Where is that one gonna be?
Oh, thank you for asking. It will be located, it'll be located downtown Johnson City in Founders Park.
Founders.
So thank you for that. I thought I headed out in the spiel. I rehearsed this before I came. There's also another event titled The Black Gaze. It will be located downtown Johnson City as well. It consists of local artists in the community, so please do come out. I am unsure of the exact location. No, I got it right here. It is at the, uh, help me, I don't have the location. It is located downtown, so do, please, support The Black Gaze. Whitney is laughing at me. Walk around, we'll find it, yeah. But thank you.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes, so much is going on. You know, we're going into the fall time of the year soon, very soon, although it was so hot today, hardly can see fall. But, you know, we have a lot of activities, as Commissioner Murphy was saying. We have Meet the Mountains coming up in August, and that, do you many have the day to meet the mountains?
The nineteenth?
Two weeks.
And twentieth?
Nineteenth and twentieth, that will be down in Founders Park and all kinda extended in the downtown area. That's a great thing for families, it's a great thing to bring the children down, there's so many activities for them. I think we talked about it last time, they also have the dog run that they throw into the, into the pool, and they jump, jump that way. Maybe we should have some competition like that, right? But also, school has started, and there's more traffic in the mornings. There's a lot of traffic around all of our schools, and our schools are full. So you're gonna have maximum number of cars. We hope more will take our transit, our school transit, to be able to go to school and cut down on some of that traffic. But just a real appeal to all of our citizens to be careful when you're driving around our schools, because there's so many in and out. And it's not just the school day, it's after-school, too. I have two younger grandchildren who are both participating in school sports, and so, I mean, they're there from three-thirty to five-thirty, and so there's just a lot of activity going on in Johnson City. It's great to see our kids, you know, really actively involved in sports and after-school activities. So please, let's all be careful, let's be, remember that big cars can hurt, and don't speed through a school zone, and, Officer Becky, you can nod back there, right, in agreement with that? So everybody be careful, and help this fall be just a wonderful time for all of our families.
And if I may add, Mayor Brock, not only speed, but don't use your cell phones, no texting. There's a two-hundred-dollar fine for using a handheld phone in an active school zone. So we wanna keep our students and families and community safe, and also keep money in your pocket.
I wanna say one more thing to our citizens. Thank your teachers and your school personnel, as they have worked so hard to get school ready to open. They've had a tough, tough couple of years, and so they need to know that, you know, the parents are engaged with them, and everybody has to be engaged and involved in the total education of our children. So get to know your teachers and take them an apple.
Commissioner Brock, we must be on the same wavelength or something, because basically we're talking about some of the things I wanted to talk about. But also, I think, I want to say thank you to the teachers, the administrators, the support service staff, and the SROs that have worked diligently to prepare for this year, and will continue to work out any kinks that there are. Also wanna recognize, as you mentioned, with the growth and all the things happening in our community, this week marks the next phase of growth in our, in our school system with the addition of two middle schools, which I think's a great and exciting endeavor that we've completed, or not necessarily completed, but we've started, there's still a lot to do. But absolutely, and support your students as they come to you with fundraisers and calendars and popcorn.
Not that you're gonna have any of those to sell, brother.
Right? And between my schedule and my oldest daughter's schedule, I'm gonna take the liberty, I've not seen her all day, but to embarrass her publicly, which I think's kind of a right of a father.
It's a bad thing.
And recognize and wish her a happy birthday, as she turns fifteen today.
Nice. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Anything else? That's it. I will add that we're doing sports, which football started ETSU yesterday, and football's been going on at Science Hill, and pray for them out in this heat with these practices they're doing, because it is, hopefully, they're keeping their fluids up while they're doing this, so we won't have too many patients showing up with that. But it's gonna be an interesting fall coming up, so we'll see how things go. But anything else for anyone, Ms. Ball?